I'm going to have you slide those under there so I can bring this forward more. You ready? Okay, well, call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, would you take role, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Dibdo.
Here.
Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Commissioner Wire.
Here.
Commissioner Berish.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsay.
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything anyone wants to discuss on the consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under appearances, we have the distinction of having Representative Tim Reich and Representative Tim Wahlberg in the room, and Representative Casey Crabtree is just coming through the door at the moment. So if the three of you, Casey, if you want to grab your chair, and if the three of you would want to come up to the microphone there so that people at home can hear better, it'd be appreciated. There's a button on the front, you just push it down to a little red light comes on.
Yeah, it's a little tricky.
There you got it. All right. Jamison, if you'll lead off the conversation?
Yeah, happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we just want to welcome you, you folks, to our commission meeting. Thank you for taking the time out of your schedules and for traveling to town to meet with us. We know that when legislative session gets here, as well as you guys do, that things get very busy, and there's a lot of bills introduced in a short period of time, and you guys are working overtime to try to keep up. So we wanted to invite you to a meeting now, a couple months in advance, so that we can have that, those conversations about what you're seeing, coming on the horizon, what your priorities are going to be personally as legislators, maybe some background about yourself as well, and give some opportunity for the commission to ask questions and vice versa. So again, thank you for, thank you for coming, and I'll let you guys fight to see who goes first.
And I think Mr. Wahlberg was the one that was pointed to, but Casey's going to cover for us.
Well, I think when the general pointed at me, I just did what the general said, so. Well, thank you guys for your work here leading our city, and Mr. Mayor for welcoming us in now, and also for giving us some background on the things that are priorities of the city and of the commission before we arrived. So a couple of things that I would say, as the legislative session approaches us, that I think are maybe going to be the things that are talked about the most, that affect the city. I would start with property taxes. We're going to have a long, robust discussion about property taxes and ways that the state can maybe assist in lowering those rates on folks throughout the, throughout the state. So I imagine there was, we're going to see somewhere north of 20 different bills related to property taxes and how those are collected, how they're administrated, and where they're used, to summarize those. Looking forward to some other issues that I think are going to be hot buttons for this city here. And other cities are the use of TIFs and how they're used and administered as well. So we'll have a, I think, a long discussion on that. And then we will have a long discussion, I think, in Pier about incentives related to data centers. And we're talking hyperscale type data centers, not a data center we would see necessarily here, but some of those that we've seen announced in areas like Sioux Falls, one up in Dole County. Those are things that I think would really come across the desk of the commissioners here. And whether it's that or anything else, I'll turn it over to my colleagues, but be happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks again. It was nice to come in earlier today and have a visit with the staff and see, and actually, where your budget comes from and how you apply that to the city. As Casey said, the hot topic is going to be property taxes. And I will tell you first and foremost, I am not one that is in favor of a one-time deal. If we're going to do something, we need to do something that is going to be longer term. There are ideas out there for one-time funding to be used for certain things, but really nothing solid plan that we have heard yet that is going to take us long-term into the future. There was some discussion earlier today about elderly's with their property tax freeze and how that affects them as things go up, things go down. And I believe the statute got adjusted within the last year or two to raise the value for the elderly property tax freeze also. So they just really need to apply for that with the treasurer's office and get all those documents submitted, and then they could qualify for that, and that is an every-year basis. Just a couple of things that I've been working on, I was a part of an EMS summer study committee where we met for three different meetings throughout the summer. There is a lot of concern throughout the state. I would say probably more West River than East River, however, it does really affect us here too on how these EMS services are going to survive. The average age retirement for an EMT is roughly 80 years old. A lot of you are shaking your head like, wow. Canova, South Dakota, person is in their 70s. So what happens to that? Who's going to fill those shoes? Where are they going to come from? So that is part of the study that we did and how to bring things up and attract people into this, into the EMS service. Another one is related to technology. So the state of South Dakota approved what's called a VEL funding. And what a VEL is, is basically a camera in the back end of the ambulance connected to a doctor and a nurse paramedic at a remote location. And if you need something, you push this button, and they come up. And they guide you, hey, you might want to check this, you might want to do this, we're going to do this for you. And by the way, we can call ahead to the receiving hospital, which one are you going to? That is a huge help for me, where I can concentrate on my patients. But also, it is a three-way call. So not only can they link the VEL receptionist, the ambulance, but the receiving hospital. And so coming up in 26, that funding is going to come up dry. So we hope that with the dollars that are coming out, what was it, roughly in the neighborhood of 50 million, 50 billion, that we can tap into some of those funds that will help some of these smaller services. Two bills specifically that I proposed to this committee, one of them had to deal with operator certification. So the example, Mr. Berish up there, if he wants to come and drive for the ambulance, he has to have an operator certification to drive our truck. He may not have to have that in the fire service, but he has to have that here. If he has to drive for us on an emergency call, he potentially could be liable criminally and civilly if something should happen. We are deterring people from coming into that. So one of the bills is basically take it from a state level, put it right back into the departments where it was always at. Another one was LPNs and RNs, they can practice in emergency medicine. But when things got shifted around in the state level, everybody was like, where do I go? Who's responsible for me? So alls they did was just take that language with LPNs and RNs and put it right in the statute so we can do this. And that's going to help a lot of services, specifically Lemon, South Dakota, where some of the nurses are on the ambulance, and they can transport that patient to the hospital. The bigger concern was funding, as everything else. How are we going to fund it? And there were some ideas that are being floated around, and I do anticipate probably one or two bills coming out yet this beginning of the session, maybe some other ideas even before that, on how we're going to help these ambulance services continue to grow, continue to fund, pay for some equipment, pay for the ambulances itself, and maybe some staff. So a lot of things that we're working on, and as Casey said, it's going to be a long session this year. A lot of days and nights, who knows what time we'll get to bed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thanks, Tim Reich, District 8, House. I'll try not to be redundant for, you know, the other two guys. One of the things that they didn't talk about that impacts all of us is the prison, you know, they're building a new prison in South Dakota. And it's replacing the facility on the hill, which is 145 years old. And so it's time to kind of replace that, even though there's some, probably some functionality in that for certain things. When that was built prior to statehood, we did different things. We locked up people. We didn't provide programming, GED, counseling, mental health, chemical treatment, all those sorts of things. So there isn't space in that for, in that facility on the hill. And so we, as you, I'm sure, read, we passed a bill in a special session to build a new facility on the east side of Sioux Falls. It's going to be 1,200 hard cells and 300 dorm-style on a brand-new campus down there. And so it'll be state-of-the-art prison. It's going to take probably three and a half years to build it. And once it comes open, they'll, they'll probably need 10 to 20 million dollars a year additional in operating expenses, just to man the thing. And, but it's long overdue, and so it's a good thing that we got that passed. We did add the money, the 650 million is there, but this operating expenses, you know, that'll come out of, that'll be a tougher nut to swallow as time goes on. So there have been three different task forces that have, just in this summer, that have worked on prison. That's outside of the whole legislator's job of coming in on a special session. So when the bill failed last year, the governor appointed a project prison reset task force to come up with recommendations and to kind of vet the whole thing and start over. I was on that task force, and then during the summer, we had an incarceration, programming, and recidivism study. I was on that thing, and then after the bill passed, the governor announced another task force, a 30-member task force, to look specifically in rehabilitation and try to get in recidivism driven down and different ways to do that. And so I get on all those. I used to run the Department of Corrections, so I think I'm kind of a, I wouldn't say an expert, but I've got probably more, more knowledge than the average legislator, so I get stuck on all those. And so it's steady work, right? Steady work, and hopefully we can get it right. One of the things, one of the committees I sit on is the House Judiciary Committee, and Representative Wahlberg's also on that committee. And one of the downfalls, I think, is that some legislators want to bring bills every year to enhance penalties, lengthen the time you're required to spend in prison for certain egregious offenses. And it's, and it's tough for a lot of us to vote against those bills. Because they say, well, oh, really? You, you don't think it'd be a good idea to keep sec, child abusers, sex offenders in longer? You know, so it takes courage to really kind of dig down on those bills and say, you know what? The, extending the period in prison isn't necessarily going to have any results in the end. And all we end up doing is, is building more prisons. And so it's a, it's a kind of a tough line to walk. You're going to be a tough-on-crime and then, but you gotta, you really got to drill down on some of those bills. I also sit on House State Affairs, and I think the property tax bills, Tim mentioned it this morning, that there's a taxation committee in both the House and the Senate. But the speaker will, speaker in the House, in the House side, and then the president on the, on the Senate side, they direct where the, where the bills are going to go. And so the speaker sends all the bills on taxation to, or on property taxes to the State Affairs Committee, which, of course, the speaker sits on that committee. That's where they go, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent. And so being on that committee is sometimes kind of a dicey deal. I find myself voting with a lot of Democrats on, on a lot of these bills that honestly don't make sense. But it's, again, steady work. The other committee I'm on is Military and Veterans Affairs. And so that committee doesn't meet every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday. It meets at the call of the chair. And so I think we've covered most of it. We're going to see some goofy bills this year. We've seen a bunch of goofy bills. One like last year was Sue China, Sue China. South Dakota's going, Sue China for what, what COVID cost is. Require the Ten Commandments to be displayed in school. Sending librarians to jail. You think you can't make this stuff up, but we got, we got 105 different people that come from different places. And politically, it's just an interesting job to do for nine weeks out in Pier. So appreciate the opportunity to come in and certainly reach out to us at any time. We try to, we do our best to read the emails at the end of the day and try to get back timely answers, especially if they're from our constituents. We get emails from, I don't know how many emails I got from somebody in Box Elder last year. And I'm just, I'm not, I'm not going to take the time to answer you because I don't represent Box Elder, so.
From the public standpoint, do you have offhand, isn't that what the cost per year per inmate may run? I think, I think a lot of people just think, oh, you just put them in there and it doesn't cost anything.
Well, it's very expensive, and I think there's, every facility's got a different cost, operating cost, because the higher-level facilities require more intensive manning. And as, as a result, there's more, more staff per inmate than, say, a minimum custody unit, where there might be one or two staff for 200, 300 inmates. And so everyone has their own per diem, if you will. But the thing that sometimes is misunderstood, that's often misunderstood, is that, say, let's pick the, let's pick the highest custody classification in Sioux Falls, like Jamison. That might have a per diem of a couple hundred dollars a day, or 175 dollars a day per inmate. But the idea that you could say, hey, well, let's take 10 inmates out of there, you're not going to save 175 dollars, because a lot of that's fixed cost. Really, what you save by reducing 10 inmates is the meals for 10 inmates and maybe some prescription drugs. It really doesn't, until you can take the scale down to where you can eliminate complete shifts, the per inmate doesn't, doesn't reduce by the cost, you know, the average per diem. So it's very expensive, you know? Back when I was Corrections Secretary, we had around 1,000 employees, and our budget was just under 100 million dollars a year. But that was a long time ago. I mean, it's probably, I mean, the number of employees, I think, is about the same, but the, but the cost is probably almost double that. And very little federal money can be used in the Department of Corrections, you know? Department of Social Services, Human Services, Transportation, those agencies are largely funded by the federal government, but Corrections is one that hardly any money, now during COVID, there was an exception there. They could replace some of that, but now that those COVID dollars are gone, it's all general funds, so it comes right out of our sales tax revenues.
Anyone else have any questions? I, go ahead.
Um, well, welcome. Thank you guys for coming. So I, I wanted to ask a question about, last session, there was a bill aimed at helping to alleviate some of the stress around childcare, and you may have seen our new childcare facility that's just down the, down the road. I know childcare is something that we struggle with in our community, many other communities as well. Do you foresee anything coming through session this coming season that might offer some relief there?
Well, great question, and I think I get the joy of, of traveling the state and having a lot of different meetings, whether it be on politics, or economic development, or business-related items. And I think that you all, and anybody who's listening, and everybody in this community should be really, really proud of what's happening across the street with that new childcare early learning center. I mean, it is one of one in this state. It is, I think, the pilot that's going to show how private and public should work together to make a difference. We're going to have a space for 140 kiddos, when every other community, their, their number one and number two issue when it comes to anything economic development-related is lack of housing and a lack of childcare. And so I think that's fantastic, what we've done as a city. And there's lots of folks that have done that, and so kudos to everybody. And let me tell you, everybody knows about it across the state, and I think that's really, really cool. Shows that Madison punches way above its weight class. Now, your question was really dialed in, whether or not that we think there'll be some sort of action taken there. That bill was handled by Senator Tim Reed on the Senate side. I don't know who had it on the House. But significant work went into that to really widen the gap, to kind of simplify this, was to widen the gap for those that would receive some assistance to put their kids through childcare. And it puts more people, it puts more people back in the workforce as a whole. Was something that passed through the House first, and then came over to the Senate second. Both sides had pretty overwhelming support, because it's one of the things that we hear about first when we go and we visit with folks in our communities. And it got vetoed by the governor, and we didn't have enough votes to overturn that, which is not uncommon. Takes two-thirds to overturn that. Do I think there'll be future action on that? Yeah, I, I, I do. I think we'll see something this year. I think we'll see something in the future. And just continuing to do that, I think, in a very South Dakota way, is, is trying to figure that out. But I think that the bill that Senator Reed put forward, I mean, well, we all, we all voted yes for it, accomplished that, and really wish the governor wouldn't overturn that.
Other questions?
Yeah, thanks again, guys, for coming. I appreciate you being here and your service to the public. So my first question, I guess, is directed more to Representative Wahlberg. You speak about the EMT and workforce challenges there. Are these funding opportunities or these bills that you're foreseeing going to be for more of the county ran EMT services, or is that the private sector as well?
Thanks for the question. So the funding that I mentioned is going to really come from the Department of Health, who is going to oversee this, and they are targeting different areas of what they want to work with, with the funding. We are hoping with our group that we can have a good proposal to the Department of Health, more specifically on the EMS side, to continue this funding. Because they, they really now know how valuable some of those services are for this equipment. It wasn't that long ago that every ambulance that is in the state of South Dakota got a brand-new life pack, and that is roughly $35,000. And that was paid for by some, by the legislature that approved that. And also came about radios, brand-new radios for the ambulances. So we were all on the state digital system, all operating the same. That was also part of a federal grant. And so we hope to continue that service with those grant dollars. But again, it's going to come from Secretary Magstat all the way down. We just hope that with a notch, as much publicity that the EMS summer study has developed, that we can all work together for the best resolution for everybody in the state, not just one section.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I could just, I'll get my other question out of the way right away here. So I guess we, we just are in the process, or just finished up going through our budgeting process, and we are, really had to tighten our belts this year. What's the state's budget look like? You know, obviously, we have the, the prison that's going to be a big capital item, but what's, what's the budgets look like for, for you guys, and do you see challenges, hurdles there?
You could tell from our opening comments that we didn't talk about the budget, because it's not so rosy. It looks much like yours. Most of ours budget, Commissioner, is, is built off of sales tax, contractors' excise tax, as you are well aware. We do not receive any property tax, but those two things are kind of major, major drivers. And sales tax is down for us right now. When we look at the whole of the economy in South Dakota, it's, it's not been, not been good here for a little while. And so I think from a budgeting perspective for, for us, and I give some of the appropriators a hard time, because I'm like, well, you've already got your answers made up for, for them. I mean, it's going to be a lot of no. So, you know, to answer Commissioner, to add to Commissioner Wolf's earlier question, new funds, new funds are going to be extremely tough to find for us. It's going to be much about utilizing what, what existed there before, because we're going to see a revenue downturn, and I'm not exactly sure when we'll see that, you know, what we'll see for final numbers, right? Because we get a little boost in end of November, early, early December from, from the state's budget. But it'll be a lot of, it'll be a significant belt tightening from a state perspective. And I think you'll see probably no, no, I think, new money-type work that, that goes on. It's going to be very, very focused on making sure that we're hitting those absolute priority items. With that said, you'll hear me and probably these two and many of my other colleagues talking a lot about ways that we can build the economy stronger and making sure that we're generating other tax dollars from outside investment, not from those taxpayers that exist here today. And I think that's our way to make sure that our budget's stronger and that we can address some of those issues that Representative Wahlberg was just talking about, and others.
Other questions or comments?
You guys are taking it really easy on us, so that's very nice.
Well, you know, not knowing, not knowing, you know, what's in front of you, it's difficult, you know, for us to project, but it's really, I want to thank you for taking the time to be here and that, giving us this opportunity to visit with you and, and show you, you know, the state of the city and, and where we've come from and, and what our projections and that are in the future. And so, you know, it's, it's the working together and understanding, you know, each other's budgets and, and personnel and things like that, that, you know, really makes South Dakota work, so.
Absolutely. We appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight, learn a little bit more about the budget earlier today. And of course, I, I think everybody's got our cell phones, our emails. We try to be very accessible, and please reach out to us when there are things that are of, of concern. And I think, closing with that, we all love representing Madison, and we're proud of what you guys are doing here too. And so thanks for your work. I know it's thankless. It's a Monday night. It's late. It's cold. It's rainy. And, and you're here serving the people. And so that doesn't go without appreciation from us and many of the folks that are out there at home. And with that, thank you for your time. We're not going to, I don't know if you guys are mad at the guy from Banner Engineering, and that's why you made him go behind the three politicians, or not. But, but thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Well, and again, you know, thank you too, and that, and if something's coming up and that you think that we need to be aware of and that, please contact us, and, you know, we'll definitely provide whatever information or ideas and that that we have on this end, so. And again, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Number nine, unfinished business. Approve the supplement to agreement with Heartland Energy for use of demand-adjusted advantage program data. Jamison, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item establishes a special program that helps to incentivize data centers, which are, would most likely be Bitcoin mining. And this is something that many of Heartland's customer communities are looking at adopting. Some have already done so. And so our, our staff work closely with Heartland to ask lots of questions and to try to better understand what this program looks like. And what we found is that data centers could bring in substantial revenue. And, um, what we found is that data centers could bring in substantial revenue to, to the city and also, um, bring in some new utility customers that, uh, would be, uh, positioned correctly in the community to be in a nice location and, uh, and be able to, to contribute to the area. Uh, so the key points that, and I know last meeting we had this item and we had a couple of Heartland staff here. And so they would be able to be, uh, uh, the best experts on it. But some of the key points that they had noted at that time were that, um, these data centers are not coming to communities around the country without similar rate structures. Um, they're being incentivized by the ones that, that have similar programs like this rather than standard industrial rates. Um, approving this agreement is, uh, one way of allowing for this opportunity to occur in Madison, but it doesn't mean that this is going to happen or that it's gonna happen, um, right away. One thing that is key is that the load has to be interruptible, and that's why the most likely customers will be Bitcoin mining. Um, other data centers such as artificial intelligence centers, uh, do not want to be interrupted. So, um, the, the key point there is that it allows the, the community in, in Heartland to incentivize, uh, some consistent usage of electricity. But since it's interruptible, if there's any emergency situations, that usage gets pared down quite a bit, um, so that that load can be better used elsewhere in the community. Uh, there's a minimum of five megawatts, and what they are finding is that more, more likely than not, um, data, uh, data centers are looking at least a ten to fifteen, and they would, um, increase from there. But there is a minimum of at least five megawatts for this program. And it's important to note there's no subsidy of other rate payers. So everything is, that is, uh, getting passed through is transmission, wheeling, demand, energy, infrastructure. Um, we're not giving them any additional breaks on what we're paying for that. So what we pay for, they pay for it. And so no other customers in the community are helping to subsidize this. And, uh, and, and we have a, um, a usage charge that is where we are able to make some money off of that, which still allows them to be incentivized because it's lower than a standard industrial rate. Um, and so again, this is a Heartland Energy program that is allowed for, for, uh, incentivizing data programs. Um, last meeting, we had, had this item on the agenda, and we had a few elected officials that identified potential conflicts of interest. And I just wanted to assure the public that, you know, generally, in any situation, whenever there's a conflict of interest, um, we encourage our, our, uh, elected officials to, to be cautious and, and, and to make sure that they're considering everything very closely so that there's no images of impropriety that would be out there. And, and generally, that, that's fine if one person, um, um, abstains. In this case, when we have three people abstaining, we're not able to proceed with the vote. So then we, we tabled the item to this meeting so that we could look more closely at each of those items. And our legal counsel has, has reviewed that. Um, and of, of the three that were mentioned last time, one was Commissioner Wire. Uh, he initially was looking to abstain from that vote, um, out of caution. But now that we've had counsel, um, allowed to have some additional time to evaluate the potential conflict, the city attorney has provided, um, his opinion that there is no direct or indirect conflict of interest, um, and, and preventing Commissioner Wire from voting on this data matter. The, the other two, um, uh, commissioners, um, would be Commissioners, uh, Dibdal and, uh, Bersh. And there are conflicts of interest there, so I expect that, uh, these two commissioners will be abstaining from themselves. But, um, there were no conflicts of interest found with Commissioner Wire. And I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions that might be from the public or from the commission on this matter.
Question, questions or comments? Okay, if not, do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the supplement to agreement with Heartland Energy for use of demand-adjusted advantage program.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Why would you roll call, yeah?
Would you do a roll call, Amy, so that you have it recorded?
Do I call even the abstaining?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Dibdal?
Abstaining.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Wire?
Aye.
Commissioner Bersh?
Abstaining.
And Mayor Lindsey?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Another new business, bridge inspection review with Banner Associates. And we have Matt here from Banner Associates, and the microphone is on, so if you would, uh, move up there, uh, we'd really appreciate your input.
Do you all have the presentation? I have printed copies if you don't.
Uh, I have the information that I've received. I'm not sure, you know, is it?
It's in our agenda packet.
Yeah, it's in the agenda packet. Yes.
Yeah, I've got it.
Hi, my name is Matt Binger. I'm a professional engineer at Banner Associates. Uh, I work, um, primarily on bridges, bridge inspections, bridge design, uh, construction observation, load rating, stuff like that. Um, and tonight I'm here to present about the twenty, twenty-five bridge inspections. I have about six years of bridge inspection experience. Uh, this presentation will go over the bridge system and, uh, some of the recommendations we discussed with Ryan when we met about the details regarding all of the bridges inspected this year. Overview for the bridge inspection program is that bridges, um, over twenty feet in length get inspected. If it's under twenty feet, that is consi- considered a small structure and it's not part of this program. So bridges over twenty feet, and that includes box culverts over twenty feet. Uh, it is a federal requirement to inspect structures every two years. Uh, depending on the condition of the structure, that can either be extended or, uh, reduced. Um, and part of this program, there's a cost share with the DOT, where the DOT pays eighty percent and then the city would pay twenty percent. Uh, why are the?
Now, when you say twenty feet, just for clarification, is this twenty feet in width, twenty feet in length? And then, uh, I'd further follow up, do we have any that are under the qualifications?
Yes, uh, the twenty feet is like if you're driving down the road, right when you hit that first end of the bridge to the other end of the bridge, that is the length of the twenty feet. Um, even if there's like a middle wall, it's from the start of the bridge to the end of the bridge, kind of along the roadway. Uh, and then the small structures, um, I believe there are a few. One that comes to mind is this one right down the road to the south. Um, it's under twenty feet, but there's a box culvert there cast in place, and, uh, um, that one is not part of the program. So I'm sure there are a few that are not a part of this program.
And the reason I ask is because somebody's gonna stop me and ask me.
Sure. Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I guess, uh.
Thank you.
Why are the bridges inspected? Is to ensure the, um, bridge is safe for the traffic that is, uh, that the structure's posted for and to detect any defects before they get to a critical condition. Uh, it's also part of, uh, professional engineers' ethical, um, responsibility to protect the public welfare. The city of Madison has, uh, seventeen bridges on their system. Zero are in poor condition, five are in fair condition, and twelve are in good condition. There are currently no weight lim- limit restrictions. Uh, looking at the past thirty years or so, there's been twelve bridges that have been replaced, and two of those have been in the last five years. Uh, some more information about those seventeen structures, fifteen of those structures are box culverts. And that's kind of what we've been seeing the DOT go to is, uh, bu- if you can make a box culvert work, that's what they prefer. Uh, they have performed very well in the last hundreds of years and, uh, yeah, they, they have, they perform well. Your oldest structure is about sixty-six years old, so.
Can I ask a question about the bridge classifications? Is there another one, uh, better than good, or is good the, the best?
Yeah, there are. Good is the best. There are those three conditions, good, fair, and poor. So only three in the overall system. Thank you. Next, we'll go over some of the recommendations we discussed with Ryan. Uh, the summary is fence repairs, grouting, storm sewer pipes, s- uh, stabilization and u- undermining, uh, preventative bridge maintenance. And some more details were discussed with Ryan in, in that meeting. The first of fence repairs, uh, there are a lot of nice railings on the structures here in Madison. However, the, the space between the horizontal members of those rails do not meet the code requirement. And, um, the recommendation would be to add fence to help prevent someone from falling in or falling through or falling over. Um, this would help prevent injury and liability if there's any accidents. Um, I'll, I'll just make another comment real quick. Uh, your structures are in really good condition. You had twelve good, five poor. So that we can get a little bit picky in a sense of like the recommendations we do instead of, we need to replace this structure or fix these major things. It's, it is important for the safety of the public, but, um, it, some of these can get a little bit nitpicky and are not crucial, so. The next recommendation would be, uh, grouting the storm sewer pipe, and that's for any pipe coming into the walls of the structures. Here, in the presentation, there are a few pictures of the cracked pipe. And our main concern with that would be is if water can build up behind the walls. They're not necessarily designed for those stresses, and it can also start eroding some of that material away from behind the structure. The next recommendation was to stabilize undermining. Uh, the pictures shown on this slide are from the Fifth Street Northwest structure. Um, the picture on the left, uh, you can see that some of that material is, uh, starting to come out, and that, that leads to the roadway settlement. Kind of on the picture on the right, you can see a patch in the road. Uh, the city has been doing a good job keeping up with this structure. Uh, this specific structure has a timber substructure, and it's fifty-three years old currently. Uh, my coworkers and their experience have kind of said that if you can get fifty years out of a timber sub- substructure, that's pretty good. So, um, just the rough estimate on how much life is left in that structure, maybe like fifteen, twenty years before you would probably be looking at, uh, replacing or doing other, something in that posi- uh, location. Some of the preventative maintenance includes sweeping and floodwashing the decks of the concrete structures. This helps, uh, remove any debris and, uh, any salts or anything like that to, so that water doesn't get down into any cracks and start spalling and delaminating the reinforcement. One of the bridges that is being monitored is the Fifth Street Northwest with the timber substructure. Um, it is fifty-three years old, and fifty was kind of that good range for getting a substructure. Um, right now, it's in fair condition. Um, and kind of the progression of the life of a structure is when it goes from good to fair, eventually it will move to the poor. And that poor condition, uh, once it moves there, it can be eligible for funding through the DOT. Um, and we'll discuss that in a couple of slides. Um, but the progression on this structure, it's currently in fair. If the rotting to the piles progresses more, um, it would probably move to the poor condition and then eventually need a load posting to reduce the loads going over the, the structure.
Matt, question for you.
Yeah.
Is, is your recommendation that a bridge is replaced before it gets to poor? Or as soon after as, as possible as it gets to poor? What's that timeline?
Yeah, uh, it probably depends on the, the structure and how fast some of those defects progress. Um, it, it really depends. On- once it becomes poor, through the funding opportunities, unless you're doing it completely local, um, it does not score well in the funding through like the DOT. So until it receives a load posting and then your score, it's all score-based. And once your score gets high enough, um, potentially the DOT would select that based on the score. So, um, it, it really does depend on how fast the defects are progressing. It, it does take time to get to a point where you need to be concerned about it immediately. So, um, I would, I would assume that if it goes from fair to poor, there might be, uh, inspection cycle or two before you would see like a load posting on it. Um, but it, it just really does depend on how fast some of the defects progress.
Sure. So i- if we get a bridge that goes down to a poor rating, um, does that, is that an immediate cause for concern? Is that any safety concerns just automatically by being classified as poor?
Uh, it is, again, it probably depends if it, um, on what defects you're finding. But in general, probably going from fair to poor doesn't require an immediate,
Okay.
um, your immediate attention.
So would it be accurate to say that once a bridge goes to poor, that'd be our indication of get a plan in place for replacement?
Yes, that would be correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is funding for that based on your score or the condition of the bridge?
Uh, the score is based on, uh, multiple things. The condition of the structure is part of that score, the location and the detour length, the local funding, kind of like the bridge inspection program. There's a minimum of a twenty percent match, and you can up the city's match to gain more points. Um, you can also have the bridge designed before. It's called bid-ready plans. Uh, that can gain you points. So there's different ways to maximize your points and, uh, potentially receive that funding.
Thank you.
Is that big? Is that the big program?
Yeah, big improvement grant program or bridge, bridge improvement. Yeah, sorry.
And that's so that municipalities, counties, state, everybody's competing for that same?
Um, potentially, the, the state is not, but the counties are. Um, and, yeah, counties throughout South Dakota would be in cities throughout South Dakota. Um, some of the pictures for the Fifth Street Northwest Bridge, um, when we inspect the timber structures, we hit it with a hammer, um, to see if we can hear any hollow sounds. Um, the hollow sounds kind of indicate, um, rotting, uh, starting, progressing, and we kind of, we keep track of that every year. Um, in these pictures, you can see the spray paint. That is kind of areas where we're starting to see, uh, rotting. Um, right now, um, it's just minor. Um, but we, we do keep an eye on it and see the progression of it from inspection to inspection. Um, so I, I have been talking about that Fifth Street Northwest Bridge and how it's being monitored. But, uh, overall, the city of Madison does have many good structures. Uh, and they've, uh, been replaced within the last twenty, thirty years. Um, so the system in overall is, is very good, and, uh, the next slide was to show you some of those good, good structures. We've discussed it a little already, but the bridge funding opportunities, uh, include the bri- big program through the SD DOT, federal funding through the SD DOT, and then local funding. Um, bridges that eventually get to that poor condition start to become eligible for the funding through the DOT. Uh, and it's all score-based, so the condition, the location, uh, and kind of the local contribution all play into that score. Um, and the way the whole process works is initially you would probably apply for a prelim- preliminary engineering grant that looks into the hydraulics, uh, of the structure. Um, and scores for that range from, it could be as low as sixteen to as high as like forty-three, uh, would get the funding. And then going further from, once you have that, you could apply for, uh, replacement funds. And there, your score, just based on past years, is, would probably need to be in like the fifties, mid-fifties to, um, score well enough to get the funding. Right now, the, the Fifth Street Northwest Bridge, I believe, is only in like the, the teens based on the condition and, um, the state it is in right now, so. And with that, um, I would just like to say thank you for letting me come present. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for being here. Questions or comments from the commission? Thanks for the good news. I'm glad we're in this shape.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here. And it looks like at least the rain has settled down, so you won't have to get your umbrella up real quick and not to make it uh, to the car on your way out. So again, thank you for being here and.
My, my last question for either matter, Ryan, is do we need any commission motion to acknowledge or to accept the report? Or is this, has this met a requirement?
No, it hasn't. It's just been a report that's been given to you. And we um, we then would take uh, the bridge inspection documentation. And Gary utilizes that to do a lot of that maintenance activity, some of those fences and things. And we always take that into account when we're doing our future planning. Um, I should mention that, that undermining at that Fifth Street Bridge, we are, we do have a project plan next year to address that. Um, but we'll keep an eye on it. Just, you know, we have the bridge inspection every two years, but we'll, local staff will keep an eye on that too. And you know, as Matt mentioned, it might take us another fifteen, twenty years down the road. But keep a, keep a close, close eye on it.
And again, with the inspections every two years, you know, that's the kind of consolation right there that it's not going to get out of hand in the process.
Right. If, if it does get to a point, you can reduce that interval to one year, six months, anything that you would think would be appropriate for the condition it's in, so.
Oh, very good. And again, thank you for being here. And anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to number eleven. Approve the master power purchase and sale agreement with Basin Electric Power Cooperative. Jameson, would you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is regarding an uh, a new contract, a new agreement with Basin Electric. So we have an existing agreement with Basin where they can have us run our generation facility to produce power when needed. And typically that would be during high need or emergency situations that they find themselves in. And so our current agreement is expiring at the end of this year. And so staff have engaged with Basin to negotiate this new contract that you have on the agenda today. Uh, Mike Pluster, utility director, has taken the lead on that. And I, I give him a lot of credit for negotiating a, a good agreement and doing a fantastic job of that. Um, I believe he's on Zoom, so I'll try doing an overview here. And then Mike, if you, if you want to add in or, or correct anything I might have gotten wrong, please, please do so. Um, so with this new agreements, uh, the changes are we have an increased rate um, of, of payment for use of our facility as well as some changes for reimbursements for certain costs when we do have to operate it. I'll note that our finance department, as well as the city attorney, have been involved and reviewed this contract as well. And, and Mike has worked with um, other partners to gather expertise to make sure that we are negotiating the best agreement that we can. Um, there's one area I want to make sure you're aware of, and that is the requirement for a five hundred thousand dollar performance assurance from the city. This is a new item, and this is where our delayed audits that we're finding ourselves in has kind of bit us again. Um, so Basin is requesting this performance assurance that we, that uh, that we would need to, to offer for them through this contract. Um, and we're working through how that's going to work. Um, likely at the next commission meeting, you will see, um, if this agreement is approved, you'll see um, an additional document that specifies how we would be able to meet that through um, essentially what would be a, a CD at a local bank. And then Basin would have access to that if we should um, fault, fall short on anything. Although we, of course, are not anticipating that at all. Um, I'll note that our goal is to complete our twenty-four audit. And if we get that caught up with a clean bill of health, then my understanding is that this performance assurance would no longer be required. And then that's um, that CD wouldn't be necessary anymore. Uh, Mike, did I get that part right or anything else you want to add in?
Uh, yeah, I think you got it right. Uh, I think Amy could probably speak more on the performance assurance and the CD. Uh, she's been working with Toby on that. But as, as far as negotiating the contract, this is more in line of what the industry is seeing uh, for peaking plants like this. Um, other than that, uh, it, it seems like a, a pretty straightforward contract with uh, increased negotiated rates. Uh, it also gives us the uh, different rates for our variable operations, uh, maintenance and our start charges. So um, we'd be able to um, get an increase on those as well.
Jameson is correct. Um, we are looking at doing a CD through a local bank here. Um, it reduces the cost for us doing it that way than pulling an insurance rating or credit rating through Moody. It'd be about a hundred and twenty dol- twenty-nine dollars a month, short term. Um, CD at seven months so that it would fit in line with a review and potentially the two thousand twenty-four audit, reducing our requirement for this need.
Then is it this year that the uh, payment is done and the gen, a gen plant is free?
Yes, our last payment will be in December for that.
So then that will reduce our uh, future expenses and, and generate, this gen plant will cover itself and generate income for the city when Basin does use it.
Correct.
Yeah, Toby Morris with Collier Securities has been assisting us with this, and he's a, a good partner to have in your corner. And, and his indication to me is that by the time we're, we're done with that CD option, that we would essentially be awash as far as the city wouldn't be costing us uh, much if, if at all. Um, and again, that, that's one aspect of this agreement. And of course, the, the power agreement is a, a bigger, a bigger contract than that. Um, that was just one of the, of the wrinkles that came through when they were proposing a contract to us.
Questions or comments?
I have uh, one more comment, Mr. Mayor, just so there's no confusion. Um, this is not going to pay us just when we run. Uh, this is a capacity payment, so we have ten megawatts. We'll get paid on our um, basically the percentage that, that we, uh, of, of the past of how we run. And what Basin is considering right now is they think we'll be at about eighty-five percent capacity, uh, which is going to generate uh, about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars if I remember correctly, Amy. And uh, our other one, our previous contract was about four hundred thousand.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay? Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the master power purchase and sale agreement with Basin Electric Power Cooperative.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Amy, I'll be abstaining from item number eleven.
Anyone in opposition? Okay, motion carries. Number twelve, approve agreement for legal services with Jenks Law PC. And Jameson, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have used Jenks Law as the city attorney for legal services um, for, for quite some time. I, I want to guess probably around fourteen years or so. I, I haven't looked at the exact amount. Um, and so right now we are, at the end of the year, concluding an agreement for legal services. That's been a two-year agreement. I mean, this agreement is, is almost identical. The only change is instead of a two-year agreement, it's a one-year agreement with an automatic one-year renewal unless either side wants to exit at that point. So it's essentially still a, a two-year agreement. Um, the, the cost is still the same. So the, the city pays a retainer of a flat amount of five thousand five hundred dollars per month. That covers all general legal services that would be outlined in exhibit A. Some examples would be routine legal assistance, consultation to the city commission, to staff, providing legal opinions, documents, and reviewing and administering contracts, as well as acting as a prosecuting attorney on city prosecutions. And there are some items, services that would be billed separately. Those are generally litigation services um, and, and items related to union matters that go beyond an impasse event. So again, this is a, a new agreement that would start uh, January of twenty twenty-six and lasts for, for one year with an automatic one-year removal unless either side wants to exit. Stand by for questions.
Questions or comments? Hey, if not, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agreement for legal services with Jenks Law.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number thirteen, authorize the mayor to sign the project closeout on AIG three forty-six, double oh twenty-nine, zero twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, Madison Municipal Airport. And Jameson or Ryan, you want to address that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll have Ryan handle the next four items.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this item and item number fourteen, uh, closeout for AIP are basically the same explanation. So I'll group them together if that'd be okay. Um, these are two FAA reports to close out the twenty twenty-five grants. If approved, we'd send them to the FAA and uh, S- South Dakota DOT for review. Um, the city needs to have the final conclusion sheet signed for the blanks for a sponsor and date, and then return to KLJ who then uh, handles that transfer for us. And these are final project reports for the twenty twenty-five construction that was completed for the apron and taxi lane at the airport. Um, the final cost reviews for each of these grants are on the last page of each packet. Um, these show the original grant amount, uh, and then it shows the total allowable costs. These are both eligible costs and ineligible costs. And then the federal share of the allowable grants at ninety-five percent. Um, the state chipped in another two and a half percent. And the, we are responsible for two and a half percent of the eligible portion. There was an ineligible portion of this project, uh, which is anything within fifty feet of the main hangar. Um, so those are broken out into the conclusions of these AIGs and AIPs. Uh, we were under the grant on both, we were under the grant on the AIP by about eighty-two hundred and under the uh, total grant uh, by two hundred and ninety dollars on the AIG. Um, those amounts will be carried over to twenty twenty-six and be utilized for our twenty twenty-six projects. Um, so uh, purpose of this grant closeout is, is just a step that occurs when all the project works, is completed and the funds are fully spent. Um, its purpose is just to con- confirm that the project met all federal and program requirements and then to release the final eligible funding.
Hey, questions or comments? Hey? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number fourteen, authorize the mayor to sign project closeout. AIP three dash forty-six, double oh twenty-nine, zero twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, Madison Municipal Airport. And again, Ryan covered uh, that in his explanation a minute ago. So uh, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve number fourteen.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number fifteen, authorize the mayor to sign the federal grant pre-application. Uh, double I J A, AIG, three dash forty-six, double oh twenty-nine, zero twenty-nine, twenty twenty-six, airport master plan and airport layout plan update. And again, Ryan, would you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. Um, so this pre-grant application through the FAA is a early preliminary submission um, that airports and uh, project sponsors provide before applying for the actual FAA grant. Um, the purpose is to help the FAA understand what projects are being planned, um, what funding may be needed for the upcoming year. And again, with the two prior closeouts, this item I I J A, AIG, and item sixteen, the AIP pre-application are, are together, so this really applies to them both. Um, these are not a formal grant request, so it does not award funding or guarantee any future funding. But it does outline the proposed project scope, um, purpose, estimated cost, in this case, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the airport's readiness to proceed. Um, the FAA uses this to evaluate eligibility, anticipate again those um, future needs and, and helps them to prioritize projects. Um, this ultimately leads to a full application, um, that would contain a lot more detailed documentation that would carry with it engineering plans, cost schedule, certifications, um, that's submitted later. Um, so this first application on uh, item fifteen is the I I J AIG grant. I I J A stands for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the bipartisan infrastructure law. Uh, the AIG stands for Airport Improvement Grant. Um, this is a major FAA funding program created under that I I J A. Um, and this provides additional money on top of the primary AIP for uh, airport projects. So this is kind of the, this AI, AIG is kind of the secondary funding to the AIP. And the second AIP, um, Airport Improvement Grant, which would be item sixteen. Uh, this is FAA's longstanding federal grant program. Uh, this provides primary funding for airport planning and development projects. Um, it existed long before the I I J A. It continues to be, as I mentioned, the, the primary uh, source of annual airport grant funding. Uh, the project we intend to use the funds for this year is the airport master plan and airport layout plan update. Um, the mayor and I are on the planning advisory committee for that along with Morris Rigan, uh, Danny Frisbee Griffin, Matt Wallman, um, Theresa Mallett, Tim Peters, and Kenny Johnson. I don't think I'm forgetting anybody. Um, the reason this ALP update is needed is it, it's a federal requirement that we have one. Um, airports must have a current FAA-approved ALP to receive the, the maximum amount of FAA funding. Our last ALP was in two thousand eight, so by the time this one gets finished, it'll, it'll be almost twenty years old. So it's, it's maybe right at due or perhaps overdue. Um, the ALP updates the layout to show completed projects and then proposed development from our master plan. Uh, we have a ten-year master plan. And then it verifies that all planned activities will meet FAA design, geometry, airspace criteria. And then it will serve as the official record of the airport's development intentions. So this is a important uh, grant application that we'll have eventually. Um, that should happen in March or April, so it'll be back in front of you then. But this is again, just the uh, pre-grant application to give the FAA a heads up on what we have coming forward.
And then uh, Ryan, you did mention, you know, the three hundred and seventy thousand. But uh, when it comes down to it, the city's cost would be about nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So those are estimated costs.
Yeah, so, so this ALP update is, um, it doesn't have an ineligible portion. It's all eligible for grants. Um, the federal government would be paying ninety-five percent. The state would chip in two and a half percent. And then we would be responsible for two and a half percent, which is about nine thousand dollars, as you mentioned.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor to authorize, or authorize the mayor to sign federal grant pre-application for the airport master plan and airport layout plan update.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number sixteen, authorize the mayor to sign the federal grant pre-application. AIP three forty-six, double oh twenty-nine, zero thirty, twenty twenty-six, airport master plan and airport layout plan update. And again, that was just covered also in Ryan's con- uh, comments. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve number sixteen, authorize mayor to sign federal grant application in regards to AIP, airport master plan and airport layout plan update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Number seventeen, November twenty twenty-five, finance updates. Uh, Jameson, back to you. Amy?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so my quick notes for this month's update is that we had um, Williams and Company onsite last week. They were here Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday and completed their fieldwork, so we made good progress with them, so. Um, they've been following up this week via email or remote. They have been utilizing Tyler, so it's been an efficient transition. Let's see, I did file for a waiver on the late filing fee, and I did hear back from the attorney general, and it was accepted, so the fee was waived. The final ordinance was approved November third, and Tyler budget is now live across all departments. Um, we are having continued discussions with Colliers and Basin to finalize the accepted structure consistent when, with municipal finance standards. Um, the finance office will be closed on Friday, November twenty-eighth, which is Black Friday. will be closed on Friday, November 28th, which is Black Friday. This update covers year-to-date, which is through October of 2025, which is 83.3% of the year. Um, one other thing to note on here that is not included is that ClearGov implementation has concluded. Um, we will be releasing that to the public, um, November 20th, which is our digital budget book. It went out to department heads earlier today to give them a chance to review it. So we're very excited about that transit, transition and transparency. Cash on hand, general cash is 6.96 million, investments 4.17 million, checking 1.95 million, money market 573,000, other 274. The electric department construction account is at 4.5 million and restricted cash is 637,000. We have our revenue guidelines.
And then on some of these, uh, are some of these in that have where we have to pay upfront to have it taken care of and then we're waiting on reimbursement later on?
Correct.
Yes.
And then sales tax wasn't available when we put this together. However, those numbers did come in later today or earlier today. Um, for, um, the month ending, it was at $405,503, which puts us at a negative 2.93% for the year.
So that, that monthly year-over-year was 11.7% down, another, another, uh, decrease from the year before. I think it, it goes to show what we've pointed out in the past that, uh, the, the state and the area is moving towards a recessionary economic condition. Um, so I, I don't think it's a big surprise. And as Amy mentioned, just under, uh, 2.9% down in the year.
All right, thank you. Uh, any public comment? I don't see anything. So with that, under announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Monday, December 1st, 5:30 PM. Uh, we have board openings on the community center advisory committee, one three-year term, ending in December 2028. Uh, City Circle Kids Edition will be Monday, November 24th, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM at the Madison Public Library. And, uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to South Dakota codified law 125 2-1 and 125 2-4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session. I have a 6:43.
No, hold on there.